Hello there, honorable members of the Public Works and Transportation Committee, Mr. Chairman, and honorable members of the City Council, including the Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the public and staff. This is the Water Policy and Related Litigation Update. This is Sherry Kleema, I'm your Deputy City Manager. So, the Public Works and Transportation Committee requested that staff provide various reports related to water, recycled water and wastewater. And for water, the committee desired a Water Division virtual tour, as well as Oxnard's water resources and drought updates, and information on the cost of water, the urban water management plan and recycled water. This report was not specifically requested, however, it is regarding water policy and related litigation, which informs the other reports and the other subject matter areas that you did request reports on. And so it's relevant to the understanding, the long-term future of Oxnard's water supply. City of Oxnard serves potable water to more than forty-three thousand service connections, of which approximately eighty-five percent are single and multifamily residential. The approximately a third of the city's water supply is imported water that's purchased from the state water project. It is sold through the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, commonly called MET. And then it comes to Oxnard through the Cuyagus Municipal Water District. That's about a third of our water supply. Another third is produced by the city's groundwater wells. And then the final third of the water supply is groundwater that is pumped by the United Water Conservation District for the city. It's the city's water that United pumped. And in any given year, this ratio may be a little bit different. We may, you know, in a certain year, take more state water. In this past year, we've taken less state water because of the concern across the state and the state's allocations of that state water, which was very low. So we had to pump more groundwater. So these third, third, third ratios are approximate and they change every year. And then finally, the city does have an advanced water purification facility, commonly called the AWPF. That's a recycled water facility. But as you know, we do not yet have the ability to mingle that water, mix it with our other drinking water. And so it is not yet direct or indirect, directly or indirectly used. And so it is not yet within this pie chart. We do sell that water currently to various agricultural and industrial and the golf course vendors. So with respect to water policy and litigation sometimes that may result from that water policy or from the from the water policy not working, I should say, we are aiming for two sort of large goals. First of all, we want to diversify the water portfolio. For the same reason that you would diversify your financial portfolio. It is less risky. It offers you more stability in your resources. And so we do have the state water, we have the groundwater. We'd like to bring our recycled water into use for being able to mix it either directly or indirectly for potable water. And we'd like to, there's various concerns and sort of hindrances to using certain water. So for example, the state water this year in the drought was very limited. But some of those some of those impediments are things that we are working to improve, such that we will be able to have more access to that portfolio. And what we're really aiming for is something that is called conjunctive use. And so what conjunctive use is, is managing the various water sources in a coordinated fashion to maximize the yield and minimize the cost to the overall water resource. You can think of it as having access to your various sources of water and being able to utilize them and switch from one to another in a rapid manner. So in a year when the state water project doesn't yield as much water, we would quickly switch more to groundwater or to recycled water. If there were a year, for example, a very wet year and the state water project had a lot of water and maybe the price was really attractive, we would then move to use more of that water. So the purpose of conjunctive use here is to be able to have access to various types of water and to be able to move from one to the next as different factors make it more attractive to change that utilization. So the approach to reaching these goals has been fourfold. First of all, we've been advocating for water policies that encourage or incentivize the deliveries of recycled water. We are advocating at the state level and at the metropolitan level to continue, to allow indirect and direct potable reuse. And then allowing at the GMA level, and we will talk about this more, to have, allow us to use our recycled water in various fashions and the yield from our recycled water. We're trying to advocate for water policies that encourage storage, accountability, retrieval and transfer of water stored from ASR and our recharge operations. We are advocating for water policies that encourage storage, accountability, retrieval and transfer of water stored from imported water recharge. So what we'd like to do is be able to take extra state water or any water that Cuyagus might offer in wet years, for example, and be able to store it in our basin and be able to use that in years when we need a little extra from the basin. Then the fourth part of the approach is to litigate the legal claims to groundwater rights. And so in the past few years, the city's advocated for its interests through the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, which is the GMA, and then through Cuyagus and MET. And we've met with various water partners across the region, such as our neighboring cities, some of the private water providers. And we've been engaged in multiple water policy and related litigation efforts, as I described more specifically in the report. And so there is this whole kind of behind the scenes and only behind the scenes on the city front. It's still public meetings, but it's done with the county and with the GMA and in these various drought task forces and so forth that are occurring to continuously advocate for Oxnard's water future. On the GMA board, which the GMA again covers much of our region and their, the main purpose of the GMA is to ensure the sustainability and protect the groundwater basin. So you can think of the basin as these pools that can be protected, that are underground where all of our groundwater sits. And the GMA is entrusted with protecting those pools. And they're protecting both the water that's in there and also the infrastructure that allows that water to stay in there. This is a five-member board. Councilmember Parello sits on that board. He represents the five cities that have an interest in the GMA. And as of late, we've been very active. Councilmember Parello is a tremendous advocate on that board. And then staff is very active in all of the GMA meetings and the subcommittee meetings. And there have been for many years, a lot of different topics that are very relevant to the city of Oxnard discussed at the GMA. Most relevantly, most recently, we've been working on two sort of goals or efforts. One is, we are trying to revise a GMA resolution from 2013. That resolution that the GMA passed concerned the GRAPE program, the Recycled Water Program. And the resolution allowed the city to receive one acre foot of groundwater pumping allocation for each acre foot of recycled water that it sold. So rather than paying the full cost of the recycled water in cash, our customers can choose to pay partly in cash and partly by these, you know, in lieu credits, these in lieu groundwater pumping allocations. We have approximately six thousand such allocations in total. But the catch is that the resolution does not allow the city to use these allocations so long as the water levels in a particular geographic region, which is called the Forbay, are low and hydrogeological conditions are poor. And so this account has been frozen for some years. We have, think of it as six thousand dollars of credit, but we can't use it. We can't actually pump that water. And so we've been working with the GMA staff. And this winter, we will be going to the GMA board to find an alternative to that resolution, to amend that resolution, such that we can have access to those six thousand credits. We're offering to either be able to pump that water over the course of time so that we don't pump it all at once. Or we can sell some of these allocations and make up the difference in cash. Either way, we want to realize the full value of what we sold the recycled water for. So it's not a frozen bank account. And then by doing this with the existing allocations, we're also setting up the future and really considering whether we want to allow for these pumpback allocations in the future for any recycled water that we sell. That decision hasn't been made yet. The second big effort happening in the GMA right now is that, as you know, the state and federal government have tremendous amount of water grants coming down the pike for water infrastructure. There's going to be a lot of money that's coming. And it seems to all be coming through the GMA and needing GMA approval before, rather than just entities applying for these grants individually. And so we have pushed the GMA and the board has really agreed with this to prioritize all the projects in the region and to determine where that funding should go to best benefit the region. The alternative would be sort of a free-for-all where everybody comes to the GMA and whoever lobbies best gets the money this year. And maybe next year, the money goes to someone else. But there's no thought around what is best for the region in terms of big picture policy. And so this has really been targeted toward making the right decisions and making sure that the money goes in the right direction to best benefit the region. And, you know, Oxnard is the biggest pumper in the region. So we have as much of a stake in this as anyone else, or more so, because we really want to make sure that the GMA gets the best bang for the state and federal government's buck. The other reason is prioritization is welcome is we will be sending it, hopefully everyone around the region will be sending it to the state legislators, the federal legislators, so that everybody is aligned on where the money should go and asking them to go and really get us some critical money, some critical resources for these projects. And then finally, whatever isn't found by the legislators, isn't covered by the grants, will need to be locally funded. And the GMA is considering right now a replenishment fee. So they're considering adding a fee on top of the pumping fee that we all pay to pump the groundwater. And that extra fee would go to these projects, cover these really necessary projects around the region. And again, we think that this prioritization of projects around the region is relevant in order to determine how much that replenishment fee should be and where those funds should go. So we've been very active in this process and will continue to be active in this prioritization process. We've also been very active in Cuyagus and MET policy efforts. Again, this is the state water project and the water that comes from Northern California to Ventura County. Cuyagus also pumps water from its Los Poses wellfields. And as of late, Cuyagus has begun a process to consider expanding its role to providing other sources of reliable supplemental water to the region. So we've really advocated for that and encouraged them to do that. Cuyagus hosts monthly drought task force meetings. Councilmember Parello and a few members of staff are active on those meetings, constantly reviewing the agendas and advocating for the city's needs in that regional forum. There's also the monthly purveyor meetings, which is at high, which is targeted toward management and high-level operation staff. We are active there. And through this, we've talked about, you know, Cuyagus's role in the future. We've talked about mitigating the impacts of future droughts. All sorts of, we've talked about the communications plans for droughts. And so we're constantly advocating for Oxnard in those various forums. We have supported and we continue to support Cuyagus and other regional partners' efforts to exert pressure on MET to invest in infrastructure toward and in our county. And so there was an effort initiated by Cuyagus and the city of Camarillo a few months ago to really put a lot of pressure to get certain infrastructure built. And we were very active in that process and we continue to be active in that process so that Metropolitan will build resources, such that, for example, the Colorado River water can reach Ventura County currently. It comes in from the east and does not make it all the way toward Ventura County. And if it did, we would have more redundancy and reliability. We also sent our own letter. The city of Oxnard sent its own letter to Metropolitan dated August 31st, 2022. And in that letter, we requested funding to build out the AWPF and more aquifer storage and recovery, or ASR wells. That is currently in MET's consideration queue for its own CIP projects. And sometime in February, March or so, they're going to start a process of reviewing those and determining which projects are going to get funded or not. So we will be active in that process. We also, in the letter, asked MET to consider storing its own water in the Oxnard basin. That would be mutually beneficial for Metropolitan and for us to keep that basin water high, to keep seawater intrusion, prevent seawater intrusion by keeping the basin level high. And also, you know, while they store that water, when they take it out, we would hope that they would leave a certain amount back or that we in an emergency could utilize it as well. So we would be setting up an arrangement that would be mutually beneficial to us and to Metropolitan. We're encouraging MET to lobby the state to allow faster approvals of indirect potable reuse, meaning injecting and storing our recycled water in our groundwater basin. Metropolitan is building a large recycled water facility outside of LA that is supposed to be built within a few years. And when they complete that project, they will want to have that approval for indirect potable reuse. And so there is an approval process currently for IPR, but it is a slow, slow process that requires a lot of hurdles. And so we think that the powerhouse that is Metropolitan could help the state streamline this process and we could benefit from that streamlined process. And then most recently, Oxnard initiated a discussion regarding, with all of our regional water partners, regarding whether there should be regional water infrastructure, not just each entity having its own infrastructure, but something that we all share or buy into, pay into. And so the leadership of that conversation, we have turned over to Cuyagus, but we are going to stay incredibly involved in that important conversation. I'm sorry, I I covered this slide in my talking points in the prior slide. We are also considering operation and expansion of the AWPF and renewal of the recycled water agreements. The city council did approve the agreement to sell recycled water in January of 2015. And that agreement should be expiring within the next few years. And so we're working on drafting a new recycled water agreement with our customers, replace existing agreements. And we will also be pursuing a permit to inject the water into the ground and later extract it, which is IPR, as I explained earlier. We are going to need to start working with the GMA to identify an accounting program for water injected into the basin. So we are in discussions with the GMA currently about the ability to bank or store water in the basin. And then we will need some sort of an accountability system so that both the GMA and Oxnard feels comfortable with the amount of water that we inject and the amount of water that we can later extract. This is not cutting edge around the state. There are other basins that do this and have a whole accountability system in place. But in the GMA, there is not that banking system and that accountability system in place. And as you may know, a few years ago, there was a whole fiasco with conservation credits. That has nothing to do with water banking, but because of the mess there, there's people's faith in an accountability system through the GMA is really eroded. And so we really have to build that up again and build a system that is more accountable and yields better results than what happened with the conservation credits. We are also looking at the first phase of AWPF expansion. Currently, the AWPF can yield 6.25 million gallons per day or 7,000 acre feet per year. But we are looking to expand it, to double it in size to those residents that are frustrated that they have not been able to directly purchase that water or that we haven't been able to even get it to them through indirect potable reuse. We are, staff is equally frustrated. About a decade ago, this was supposed to have been possible, direct potable reuse and indirect potable reuse. But the regulations just haven't been there. The process just has been slow and unwieldy. And in some cases, some portions of that are still not allowed. And so we are still building out the infrastructure because there will come a point, and we think it's sooner rather than later, that this will be inevitable in the state of California. The state will have to allow for direct potable reuse and will have to streamline its indirect potable reuse regulations. And we want to be ready for that. And so we are looking to build this out. We are in discussion with Metropolitan about funding this. We already have the low-interest WIFIA loans as well as a backup. And so we are looking to do this in a cost-effective manner to secure Oxnard's water future through recycled water. We are unfortunately in two different lawsuits right now related to water policy. But we have to be involved in this litigation to back up where we need our policy to go. And so one of those lawsuits is Oxnard versus the GMA. And basically, a few years ago, the GMA began a process of approving groundwater sustainability plans. And the first step of that process was the approval of an allocation ordinance whereby they allocated certain pumping allowances per entity. They gave us each pumping allocations, you know, a limited amount that we would be able to pump. And the state is requiring the whole basin to pump less or to become sustainable, rather, by the year 2040. And the method that the GMA selected to getting to that sustainability is slowly reducing the amount of water that each entity can pump over the course of the then twenty years, which they're calling a ramp down. The ramp down hasn't been put in place yet. There's still going to be, we hope, this year, discussions about that ramp down. But the GMA did pass the initial allocation ordinance. We were comfortable with our initial allocation and with other entities' initial allocations. However, on top of the standard allocations, the GMA also allowed for two flex allocations, what they call flex allocations, which are essentially provisions where they're allowing two entities to borrow extra water on top of the water that they already got for their allocations. And that excess water, that, those flex allocations were an acknowledgement of their reliance on other water sources. But Oxnard didn't receive the same flexibility for its underpumping of the basin due to use of the state water project water. And so the city sued the GMA on the allocation ordinance, saying that other entities were receiving preferable, were being treated preferably in that ordinance. We retained the law firm of Myers-Nave to represent us in those proceedings. And we are working to settle this lawsuit. We're trying to achieve the same flexibility that was provided to other entities by the GMA. The trial is set for June of 2023. But hopefully, we can settle this sometime before then and not have to incur litigation costs. Second, a coalition of agricultural pumpers recently initiated litigation to adjudicate the Oxnard basin. So a groundwater adjudication is a legal proceeding. It is a lengthy and costly proceeding whereby the pumpers ask a court to better define the rights that various entities have to use groundwater resources. Through this process, the court assigns specific water rights to water users. And the court can limit the groundwater pumping by all the users and can compel the cooperation of those who might otherwise refuse to limit their pumping of groundwater. and can compel the cooperation of those who might otherwise refuse to limit their pumping of groundwater. Um, courts in California have adjudicated twenty-two basins. And like I said, this this can take a decade, it can take longer. Um, it's incredibly costly. So we did want to avoid being in this basin adjudication. However, um, some other entities filed the lawsuit. And now we are in the beginning stages of the adjudication. We've retained Myers-Nave also to represent us in those proceedings. And their attorneys, along with our in-house counsel and city staff, are working hard to protect Oxford's water rights. We're doing a lot of work on the front to prepare for this adjudication so that we will get the best yield on our water rights as possible. Recommendation is that the Public Works and Transportation Committee recommend that the city council receive and file this water policy report and update on uh related lit- litigation. And um I will be available along with uh Michael Wolf from the Public Works Department and Joe Marsinko, the Assistant Director of the Public Works Department. The three of us are working together on a lot of this water policy and litigation. And so we'd be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.